I now call to order the regular meeting of the Indianapolis Public Library Board of Trustees. Ms. Gilbert, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
President.
Dr. Matata.
Present.
Dr. Palacio.
Present.
Dr. Payne.
Present.
Ms. Tribble.
Present.
And Dr. White.
Here.
We do have a quorum.
The Chair recognizes a quorum. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for joining us. I'm Hope Tribble, President of the NDPL Board of Trustees, and welcome to our August Board Meeting. This is our first meeting at the Fort Ben Branch. This location opened just a little bit more than a year ago, and we are really excited to hear the report of all of the first-year operations in just a moment. But first, I'd like to highlight some of the positive attention that our library has been receiving. We at NDPL often say thanks sincerely to our partners, donors, and friends for their support of our mission. However, it's also important to recognize the accolades that we are receiving from other organizations, so I'd like to take just a few moments here to share and celebrate some recent honors. First, the Glendale Branch, where we met last month, has received the Merit Award from the Indiana Institute of Architects as part of its Design Awards Program. The program recognizes projects by leading Indiana architects that exemplify design excellence as determined by a jury of their peers. So it's a wonderful acknowledgement of the space that our library encompasses at Glendale. Next, Purdue University Extension Services honored the Indianapolis Public Library with the very first Marion County Friend of the Extension Award. This honor is significantly contributing, is significantly contributing to Purdue Extension's success and to the success of our community. This partnership has brought STEM, Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics Education, urban agriculture, and healthy living programs to nearly 1,500 youth and families across Indianapolis, positively impacting the community's educational landscape. So we thank you, Purdue Extension, for this recognition. We could go on, but I just want to share one more. Just four days ago, Mr. Tony Radford, who is a retired, longtime employee and founder of our annual Meet the Artist exhibit, was given an important honor. On Thursday, Mr. Radford was awarded the Crystal DeHaan Lifetime Achievement Award from the Indy Arts Council. This major award celebrates individuals working to advance equity and innovation in the arts. We really want to congratulate Mr. Radford. He's brought so much pride, and we are appreciative of all of his service and the decades of contributions to Meet the Artist, NDPL, arts, and our community. So thank you. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to echo all of these major organizations in honoring the exceptional people, programs, and services of Indianapolis Public Library. Congratulations to everyone all around. Thanks. So now I will invite Ms. Mary Ann Krupa, Area Resource Manager, and Mr. Stephen McKenzie, Fort Ben Circulation Supervisor, to give the Fort Ben Manager Report on behalf of the branch manager who's unable to be with us tonight. Please come forward. Thank you so much for, to you and all of the staff for hosting us. I do want to mention, thank Brittany McFadden for these nice happy birthday bookmarks that she shared with the board, and thanks for all the hospitality. So we're eager to hear your report.
Okay. All right, so President Tribble, members of the board, I'd like to welcome you to the Fort Ben Library, and thank you for inviting me to speak with you this evening. We've just celebrated our first birthday on August 19th. It's been an amazing year here at the branch. You may have seen the paper chains decorating the branch out there, and that's something that some of the children have made for us to help celebrate. And I encourage you to take a look at our guestbook at the circulation desk, where we've received so many notes of appreciation telling us how happy people are that we're here. I also wanted to thank Shelby Peak, our branch manager, who was unfortunately able to be with us today. She did all of the preparations for your visit here and put together the slides you're about to see. And I know she really is sad she couldn't be here to show you this, so.
Oh, it's there.
Ah. Okay.
There we go.
All right. So we have received a huge amount of support from the community. We currently have 37 active volunteers, 19 of which are from New Hope of Indiana, and they volunteer with us weekly. We've hosted six interns here at the branch, a library science intern from IU, three interns from the Pathway Resource Center, and two seniors from Lawrence North High School, who are part of the Spanish immersion program and help us with translation and interpretation during the school year, so. There it goes.
Okay.
So, and these numbers are from our first year, from August of 2023 through July of 2024. The community has been very active with the branch and welcomed us with open arms. I would just like to call out some particular collaborations on the slide here. So we have worked with the Lawrence Advisory Council on Disabilities. They helped us to receive our accreditation as a certified autism center. We also hosted the AARP Free Tax Preparation Service, and they assisted over 700 people in filing their taxes. And we're attending the monthly Community Association of the Far East Side or CAFE meetings to share information and resources with other community organizations. And we've also worked with the YMCA, the City of Lawrence, and the Lawrence Township Schools in varying capacities to, you know.
I was gonna scroll.
Oh, sorry. To, you know, host things here at the branch. So here at Fort Ben, we serve a very diverse community. 11% of the population are Spanish-speaking, and 16% are of Latino heritage. Last year, we participated in Dia de Latino, Dia Latino de Lawrence, and I've been invited back to attend this year's celebration. And there's also a growing Haitian Creole population here in the Lawrence area, which we are supporting through the addition of French and Haitian Creole books into our collection. We've also been attending events hosted at the Haitian Association Headquarters, which has recently relocated into our service area. We just wanted to take the opportunity to introduce the library and the services it can provide to, you know, people and community members who are not familiar with the library. We've also recently adapted to the use of the language line, which has, we've had a lot of use out of that. It's been a great resource to us here at the branch, mostly with helping us speak with Spanish-speaking patrons who need help. So we are the first branch in the system to be registered as a certified autism center. This means we offer some services that are not generally available at other branches. We have sensory guides posted at our entrances, which explain the sensory experiences patrons should expect in the branch. We have a comfort room that allows patrons to have a more controlled environment if they are feeling overwhelmed. And we offer sensory kits in the branch, as well as in programs for people that need them. We have a sensory-friendly story hour that takes all these needs into account. So we've heard from some patrons that they travel as far as from the other side of town just to come to this branch because they feel welcome to know that staff have the training to help them if there's an issue. And given our success, the library is going to sort of extend this accreditation out to five other branches in the system so that people won't have to travel as far to get this sort of access. So we've had several successful events here at the branch. We hosted the Disability Resource Fair, which has over 80 attendees. We partnered with the Central Indiana Division of the National Model Railroad Association to hold a model railroad train show, which was wildly popular. I think we had 350 people attend that, so that was something. And then we also hosted the U.S. Navy's sailors, who did a storytime to our kids here at the branch, as well as our more normal programming, like the Teen D&amp;D Club or Sensory Friendly Storytime, or we have a couple of book clubs. The Book Talk Book Club is pretty popular, so. Oh, I wanted to point out that we have Erica on the left there. She was our MLS intern. And then Miracle and Samaya from the Pathway Resource Center in the center there, so. And that's pretty much it. Did you have any questions?
Thank you so much for that report. Are there any questions?
How many employees did you say? I mean, just approximately.
I would say approximately, I think we have, I mean, around 16, 16, yeah, I would say.
16.
16 to 20, it varies depending on the school year, honestly.
It seems to me that you are responding to the needs of so many populations, and I just highly commend you. I can't believe that's all the staff you have. And I'm glad that you are receiving help from other community organizations to, so bravo to you.
Well, thank you. Yeah, we do what we can.
Yeah.
Did anyone else have a question?
You have 37 volunteers coming out, and I can only imagine that with that number, it's because you're very welcoming, too, that they get a sense of it. What are some of the things that the volunteers are doing now?
Well, they've, let's see, they've recently helped us. We've been weeding the DVD collection, and they've helped us to discard DVDs that have been damaged or, you know, sort them so that we can send them to branches that, where they can hopefully be used since they're not being used here. They've also helped us with some of our craft projects that we prepare for children. They do the prep work for that so that we can host crafts, which we try to do bi-weekly-ish. Have something out, there's a craft table in the back for kids, so they have something when they come in after school.
Wonderful. Volunteers are always necessary. To have that large of a number, in part because you are a welcoming place. It makes a difference.
I was gonna say, a lot of that can be credited to Sarah Tatson, who's our volunteer coordinator. She does an amazing job.
Thank you so very much.
You mentioned the New Hope organization. Can you tell me a little bit about it? I haven't heard about it.
So they're an organization that has, that has, helps adults who are, oh, boy. Yes, there we go. So they help adults and people with disabilities who sort of integrate into daily life and provide them opportunities that are not readily available to them, is I guess the way I would put it.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Palacio.
Thanks for all you do. It's amazing branch. This is the one that I visit most often, even though I've been in a bunker for the summer working. But how about the youth? How many children or teenagers come here to use the library on a regular day?
We see a high engagement with our littles, our smallest patrons. We have a lot of turnout for our storytimes. We have, I wouldn't say as many teens in the branch, but we do have some, and they're consistently coming. We have our D&amp;D Club, which has, I think it's up to eight members now that are coming every week to play Dungeons and Dragons. And I don't know if any of you have ever played that, but eight players is a lot.
It is.
It's a handful. We might have to split it into two groups. But, yeah, and then we, we see a lot of pre-teen. They use the collection. I'm honestly surprised how much they use the collection here consistently, the JEs and the graphic novels and J-Fiction, especially during summer reading. It's like the shelves are looking awfully bare. They're all checked out. We gotta get more books in here. So, yeah. Thank you.
Concerns that we've heard was the, how noise travel across the different phases of this branch. Is that still a prevalent concern, or what are you doing to counter that?
Yes, it is. And we are actually working to, we're working to maybe, well, we have a solution in the works. We're waiting to hear back from the ratio design about what that's going to look like. But we're looking at maybe enclosing the children's area in such a way that the sound wouldn't travel.
I kind of knew the answer to that. I'm on the facilities committee, but I wanted to make sure that other people heard that you have analyzed the problem and working on some solutions, or at least some ways to reduce the level of noise in the branch. So I want to commend all of you guys for working through that.
We had our first meeting about that on Monday, so, yeah.
We're looking to see mockups in a couple of weeks, so, yeah.
It is a noisy library.
Well, you know, in the old days, nor the library was not permitted. But now we know that it's not the noise that's the problem sometimes. You know, you want an active, involved, invitational library. But we also, probably noise is one of the number-one concerns we hear from different branches, and we, we need to be more cognizant of that when we renovate branches and make sure we do something about that. So I want to commend you guys for working through the situation, and I'm sure, and talking to Adam, I'm sure that we're going to get some things resolved.
Yes, we've got some good solutions in the works. I think it's gonna go well.
Any other questions?
I'm not a board member, but I would just say, as your neighbor, I literally live five-minute walk from here. So happy you're in the neighborhood and happy that this is part of where I live.
And he influenced us to make sure that it was over here.
It only took 30 years, it's fine.
I was gonna say, you are not the first person that has told us that. We really feel appreciated here.
Well, what a great report, what a great first year. Congratulations. Thank you for stepping in. And please give Ms. Shelby Peak our regards. Tell her thank you for all she did to prepare. We miss her, we'll see her next time. And if there are no other questions, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I now ask Mr. John Helling, our Chief Public Services Officer, and Ms. Devery-North, our School Agent and Family Program Specialist, to come forward. They're going to report on the recently concluded summer reading program, and we are excited to hear about this, too.
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. I'm John Helling, I'm the Chief Public Services Officer. We are here to give you a brief recap on the 2024 Summer Reading Program, which has just concluded. So, yeah, so first, we're gonna talk about the why. Why do we do summer reading program? Why have we done it for 105 consecutive years running now? Basically, it's to encourage the love of reading. So in kids and teens, we're trying to build those literacy skills and build the habit of reading, engage them through incentives and workshops and things like that, make them kind of alert to the world around them and... them kind of alert to the world around them and how they can experience it with books and with library programs and things like that. For adults, it's less about building that foundational literacy, but it is still about building that habit of reading, building that love of reading, and kind of alerting them to all the different possibilities that are available to them at the library. So that's the mission. Some specific goals that we set for ourselves in 2024. For kids and teens, we wanted to have more first-time summer readers than last year. And we also wanted to increase the participation by children of color. And we're gonna get into the details of the data and what we, what we were able to measure in those areas in a little bit. For adults, the goals were a little bit more broad. We just wanted to promote the reading habit outside of the academic and work-related, you know, reading and the pleasure reading and the, you know, self-engagement and things like that. We also wanted to provide experiences where adults can connect with the communities at the library through programs and through other things. And then collectively, we wanted the community to spend eighteen million minutes reading across both programs, children and adults. And eighteen million, that's a, that's a big number. I did some math. I hope I did it correctly. That's about thirty-four years spent reading. That's what we were shooting for. That was our goal. And we will tell you if we made that or not here in a little bit. Okay, so that's the why. Let's talk a little bit about how. So for kids, kids and teens can participate as individuals. They can participate as part of their families. They can also participate through a group, such as a summer school or a daycare camp, things like that. That's mostly through our outreach department. And then they track the minutes spent reading and, and some activities that they can complete along the way. And real quickly, on the idea of measuring minutes, that's how we do it at NDPL. Across the profession, you'll find libraries that do it differently. They might count pages, they might count books, they might count, they might allow you to count multiple things. We choose to measure minutes because we feel that that's the best reflection of the work and the effort that's being put in to develop reading. And if one kid spends sixty minutes engaging with a book that's challenging to them, we want to reward that kid the same way we would reward a kid who spends sixty minutes breezing through three or four or five books, that both of those kids are putting in that effort. So we want it to be equitable in terms of the reward that we're offering. So for grownups, participation is only on the individual level, but we do still count minutes, and you still can do activities. And both sets of people do get prizes. Everybody loves the prizes. So kids get prizes, grownups get prizes, they get fewer prizes, but they do still get prizes. So more, more nuts and bolts. This is how we track minutes read. Officially, we track it through an app called Beanstack, but we make these charts for people because they love them. I like to fill my refrigerator up at home with them. They are very fun. And you can see, we have three kind of levels as far as the charts go. We have the Early Literacy Tracker, which is new this year. And it's, it's kind of small there, but on the right-hand column, you can see some tips that we give for parents and caregivers about how to get your kid ready to read. If they're not of reading age yet, you can still, you know, get them ready to read by singing, talking, playing, those kinds of things. In the middle, you can see our Ages Six to Eighteen Tracker. That's kind of our main, main tracker. You color the little paw prints in. Each of those little gaps is twenty minutes. And when you fill up a paw, you move on to the next one. It's very cool. And then the Adult Tracker, there on the right, you know, who, who doesn't love a sticker chart, where you can measure your progress? Even if you're a grownup, sticker charts are great. So we created something a bit more grid-like and formal for the grownups. And these are the reverse of those flyers, so you can see the activities that we ask people or we, we offer people to participate in. For kids, there are eleven total activities. When you complete seven of them, you get a prize. And there are things like, you know, tell the librarian about the story that you like best, or check out a cookbook, take it home, cook some food, and tell us about it. So again, just kind of, you know, alerting people that, hey, these books are great, but there's also experiences that you can have with these books, and kind of like linking it to the real world, so to speak. And then the same story on the adult side. The adults, we're just kind of trying to broaden their understanding of all the different services that the library has to offer. So for example, if you're not familiar with LinkedIn Learning, or you didn't know that you can attend an author talk virtually, we're trying to alert people to that, and then, you know, reward you after you've done four out of nine of these adult activities. And now we're on to the data and the numbers, so I'm gonna pass it to Devery.
Yes. Hi, my name is Devery North. I run the Kids' Summer Reading Program, so I'm here to talk about the data. So minutes read collectively between our programs, individual, families, and groups, those are our kids' programs. The red is mainly run through our branches, the green is through our outreach program, and then yellow is adults. So collectively, we smashed our community reading goal of eighteen million minutes. In fact, the kids themselves almost reached it, which is really great. So we had a collective of twenty-one point nine million minutes read this summer. And I definitely don't know how many years that is, but it's a lot. Yes. So here is a breakdown of our participation. We do see a little dip this year in overall participation. We did have less engagement with adults, but our kids' program is seeing an uptick in participation, which is fantastic. We did see less overall first-time readers in the program, but we're thinking of different tactics on how to tackle that for next year. Oh, and I did want to point out on that, too. If this chart went out to 2022, you would see these big leaps and growths in the program after us recovering for COVID, which has been a little rocky on how to plan for the program. So even though we've seen a little bit of a dip this year, it is really moving in a more sustainable direction for our staff capacity, which is also a really great sign. This is a different look at the minutes read this summer. In 2022, the adult program didn't count minutes read, they were just activity-based, so that's why you don't see any minutes there. But these last few years, again, because we saw a dip in adult participation, our overall minutes read is a little bit lower, but our kids and teens is way up, which is fantastic. That means more kids are participating, and also more kids are reaching the goal of twenty hours read by the end of the summer, which is fantastic. These are our activities. Again, in 2022, the adult program was solely activity-based, which is why you see that big leap there. It's a little bit different over the last couple of years. They do have to read and complete, four out of nine activities to complete the program. So you do see a little bit of a dip there. And for the kids' program, we just want to make sure that we're making engaging activities for folks to participate in, so we'll be working on that for next year. Next, we're looking at the demographics for the program. These pie charts are in percentages. One thing I would like to point out here is that a significant portion of the pie are either blank or choose-not-to-answer. Demographics is voluntary information when you sign up for an account in Beanstack. Much like the library cards, you don't have to provide that information. So I think it's about twenty-two percent of accounts don't have demographic data associated with them. And our group program run through our outreach department, we are also not able to collect demographic data on that. So we're only looking at a fraction of a fraction of accounts here. But that being said, we want to make sure our program reflects Marion County as a whole. Currently, we are not achieving that, but this is something we are actively working towards. This is something we're not gonna see leaps and bounds in year over year, but hopefully over the course of five or a longer period of time, five years, we'll start to see this change in a more positive direction. And here is that same information just by count, so you can kind of see the blank, which is that peachy color, is a little bit, is a, is a big chunk of our demographic data. And then finally, we do complete surveys, or patrons' complete surveys for the programs. This are our five questions based on a zero-to-five scale, five being the highest. So it's really great to see most of these questions over on that high-end scale. People have found the program encouraging to keep spending their time reading. They've helped their reading confidence. I would love to point out that our highest score is for library staff was courteous. That's really wonderful to hear, because summer reading is a very busy time. And it's great to hear that our staff are able to meet our patron needs. And then we do have a lot of wonderful free-form responses to our patron feedback. This is just a high-level summary of the feedback we received. The program encourages reading. Yay! A lot of our participants reported increased reading among children and adults in their house. They find the program fun and engaging, and it is especially effective with incentives for kids, which is great. It gets the whole family involved. Many families enjoyed participating together, strengthening those family bonds. There was a really lovely quote from a family who reads to their young kids, and that they feel a tangible difference in the relationship they have with their children as a result of participating in the program. So it's wonderful that they're all reading together, but they're also creating memories through reading, which is magical. Library promotion, like John said, we really want to increase, you know, the library is about reading, but we also have a bunch of other resources. Patrons are saying they're visiting the library more, and they're more aware of resources that we have that they didn't know of before. And finally, that staff appreciation. Lots of patrons praise library staff for their helpfulness and enthusiasm about the program.
Okay. And just to kind of tie it all together, we've got some fun pictures to show you from some community members who enjoy the program. These are, these are pictures of folks who are picking up their prizes, which is always a fun day. You can see Decatur, Southport, Spades Park, and Franklin Road there. Oh, let me back up. I apologize. I wanted to specifically thank, up there at the top, you can see some of our sponsors who, who very generously donated some grand prizes, like Can Can Cinema, Nine Lice Cat Cafe, and the Eagle Creek Park Foundation. A couple more scenes from across the system. So something a lot of branches get really, really creatively invested in is decorating window displays for the branch. You can see West Indy made a cool, you know, they really took the pet shop, or pet theme to, to a cool extent, to create a little pet store in their, in their window there. You can see Martindale Brightwood in the middle, and then a lively conversation at the coffee brewing program that, that took place at Michigan Road. And these are just, yeah, some, some more pictures. So Storytime at Wayne. Every year, Wayne does storytime for the folks who come and get the free lunch at Wayne Branch, and the branch manager, Melinda, invites members of the community and people from the board and the staff to come read, which, if you haven't signed up for that, you should do it. It's really, really fun. That's a really good way to spend an afternoon, so that's a picture from, from that. The Animal Meet and Greet is always one of our most popular programs across the system. So you can see a, an image there from a participant at East Washington. And then Glendale had a really cool display where every kid who read twenty hours got to re, write their name on a little colored square there and hang it in the window, and they made a really cool, really cool display. And finally, we just want to recognize the patrons who participate in the give-back portion of the program. So part of the, you know, like I said, way we encouraged folks to engage with their communities is to make donations. We had almost three thousand books donated for the Boys and Girls Club, and we had three hundred and forty-one tug toys and blankets donated to IndiHumane for the animals there. So that was really awesome to see. And that, in a very, very small nutshell, is our summer reading program for 2024. We are happy to answer any questions.
Great report. Thank you. Very exciting. Are there any questions from board members? Thank you. I think you said it all.
Probably one idea. You know how competitive we are with schools and what have you? Is there some way that we could set up a system where we had some library staff to coordinate with elementary schools in the different areas where we have branches? And to get those people at the schools to advertise the summer reading program? And as a reward, students would read and, and they would have to churn in validated reading to the school. And at the end of summer, the schools could validate those, send them in to us, and maybe through the foundation or some other donors, we can have awards for students from schools, or really the awards would go to the school. But the students will also get a token of participation and appreciation. And I'm sure that would stimulate even a greater influence, because right now it's like on the parents and the interest of parents and students, but when you throw that competitive thing in, and the first year you give out the awards, a banner to those schools, and different miniature banners to the students who earn that, I think you can blow the, the top off of this, because kids are so competitive. And if you set it up right, you can get the schools almost competing to be the best reading school, or et cetera, you want to give it. But if you put some thought into that, it would take a cadre of people to designate schools connected to a branch. But that shouldn't be too complicated to do, because except for Speedway, we kind of got everything else covered. And so it doesn't matter what district they're in, or they're in charter schools, doesn't matter. It would go to that particular school if you have that number of students reading from that school. But it's just an idea to consider. If you really want to get us back ahead of where we used to be prior to the pandemic, I think that would be something to do.
I think that's a very interesting idea. And the more elements of community that we can bring to bear on it and encouraging kids to read, the better. And I remember those sectional banners in my high school. Everybody's very proud of those. One for reading would be really cool.
Well, I'll tell you what. When I was principal and superintendent of Washington Township, and we put the state championships in front of the high school going down eighty-six, you'd be amazed how powerful that, that was, and the pride that built up for the students in the school and the parents and everything. So winning is still important. And that's another facet of winning.
I agree. We'll explore that. I think that's a great idea.
Just want to commend you on the language that you were using. You didn't always talk about just the parents. You said parents and caregivers. And I wrote that down in pack because so many young people are serving as custodial parents, and sometimes it's grandmothers and grandfathers and aunties and uncles. And so when you said parents and caregivers, it really spoke to the fact that our community is really diverse, and how do we pay attention to that? So thank you for extending the language from the usual father, mother, parent. Caregivers make a big difference.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Absolutely.
And John, if you're thinking about following up on my suggestion, I would, I would be a volunteer through a planning committee to get that done.
Excellent. I love a volunteer.
You'll get some more support, too. You've got Can Can down here. You're gonna get some more support.
Plus a more cause and process.
Excellent. That's it, Dr. Pan. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Helling and Ms. North. Great job. Congratulations, and thank you for your report.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is public comment. Ms. Gilbert?
Yes. We have two individuals signed up this evening. We do welcome feedback from the public about our Indianapolis libraries, and this is a time when the public may address the library board. There are two of you. Please do not repeat the same comments someone else has offered. Please note that this public comment time is not appropriate and inappropriate forum for commenting on matters related to employee charges, employee complaints, or alleged employee misconduct. Any such matters should be brought promptly to the attention of the CEO or the Human Resources Department, where matters can be properly addressed in compliance with established library policies and procedures. A five-minute limit will be allowed for each speaker. Each speaker should give their name, and if they are speaking, on behalf of a group. First, we have Michael Torres, and then the next speaker will be John Flanely.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michael Torres. I'm president of ASME Local Thirty-three Ninety-five. We represent the public library workers throughout the system. I'm here to talk about the great, the good wage initiative that's on your agenda tonight. I think it's a great initiative, as I've mentioned before, and how it raises our staff salaries closer to more of a living wage. And disbursements of this money is, these funds are gonna be really important, I think, and gonna be key, how that is allocated. And considering the way it is gonna be dispersed, how we've normally have done raises before has always been across-the-board percentage. And I don't know if that's really the best way we, to, to have it dispersed, because we have such a wide range of staff, considering that a four percent raise for a library clerk is minimal compared to an administrator. And we're not here about the haves and haves-not, but I just want to make it a more realistic dispersion of funds. And I noticed also in the budget, and the reason I say that, because And I noticed also in the budget, and the reason I say that, because in the budget, I noticed that it's mentioned a range of 2, 2 and 1/2% to 4%. And it's a good start, I agree, but when you consider our librarians who are starting at $22, who have to have two degrees, it really, and also have to continue learning units, so that's pretty close to what $18 is, is what we're trying, I understand, we're trying to move our staff up to. So I know that we've met with council, and I know there, things may look favorable for us, and we're always looking for more funds. So I just want to say that we are, we are scheduled to also speak with, meet with the, with a county, the CFO and everything, and we're just giving this as a preemptive wish or idea of what we're kind of considering as far as wages. We appreciate all that you've done already, you've done, you've always addressed the bottom salaries, starting salaries, and a few years ago, we finally addressed the salaries for those who have been here 10 years or plus. So I want to really consider those who are there daily, every day, who are directly affected by and affect the community. So just really consider this and take time to consider how those funds are allocated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Torres.
My name's John Flanely. I am speaking as an individual, just to let you know a little bit about myself and why I'm here tonight. I've spent probably about 10 years or so working as a, you know, in disability supports, disability services. And currently, I am an employment consultant, so I, what I do is I, I'm authorized by the state of Indiana through vocational rehab rehabilitation to help people with disabilities, both like find jobs and also like maintain employment. And we work with, you know, everybody in the community. And also just wanted to shout out Fort Ben, like the Certified Autism Center, I think is a, a great step, and it's cool to see this branch, you know, kind of leading the way for what some other branches can be doing. I do want to, the reason I came to do a comment today is because I did have an experience recently that I think needed to be addressed, and I could think it could be just something to keep an eye on, could be an area for improvement. So a person that I support was offered an interview opportunity at a branch, and, and asked me to support him as a reasonable accommodation, just being present with him, kind of helping him, you know, fill in some context for, for certain questions during the interview process, which is not too dissimilar to like, you know, the, the interviewers are kind of sitting where you're at, and him and me are kind of, you know, in our little table, right? So it's kind of similar. Can be kind of intimidating for someone who's like maybe not had a lot of job experience. So, so when I, when I went with them and we got to that portion, I, I kind of explained my role and my purpose there, which was kind of similar to what I just said, is just, you know, I'm here to, I'm this person's employment consultant, I'm here to help provide context, you know, give some extra information for what he's saying. And I was told after saying that, that according to what they've been told by the HR department is they are not allowed to hear from anyone but the person, and no employment consultant can like give any, any verbiage at all during that question and answer, which is very odd. Like that, that's not something that's, that's common in, in Indianapolis that I've seen other businesses. Just, it's, it's a reasonable accommodation, it's, it's part of this person's rights to have that person available to, to help provide context. And I thought it was very odd, so I, I talked to my supervisor about it, and she was like, you know, that is weird, they did the same thing to me a while back. So, so that tells me it wasn't just a one-off thing, it wasn't the branch, it was something with the HR department that they're telling people. So what I'm asking today is that this be looked at in some capacity and just kind of reevaluated. I, you know, I can only speak on this experience, but I do know that like, over the years, the HR department of the library has done some headline-grabbing things that, you know, maybe haven't totally been processed by the library. And I'm just here to tell you that there are still things that need to be addressed by the HR department, about the HR department. So that's why I came here today. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Flanely. And just as a follow-up, I will ask Mr. Dieterman to review this issue with our diversity policy, human resources.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. And our attorneys. That concludes our public.
Yes, ma'am, it does.
Test it on me.
Can we give us contact information, so after we do all of that, do we can communicate directly?
Absolutely. Would you mind sharing that, can you share that with John?
I'll do my personal one, because I'm not speaking on behalf of.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to approval of the minutes. There are minutes from the executive session and regular special, and special meetings. There is a, well, first we'll begin with the regular meeting of July 22nd, 2024. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting held on July 22nd?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The meetings have been, the minutes have been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Dieterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved, the motion carries. Next is special meeting of August 13th, 2024. Is there an emotion, is there a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
The minutes have been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Dieterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
I'm gonna abstain, I don't think I was here for that meeting.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. Great, we'll move on to committee reports. I do want to caution our board members when we get to, as we go to the committee reports, one thing, we don't have a lot from DPHR, but we have 11 resolutions for facilities, and so we may need to beg your indulgence. Now, it went pretty quickly during, during the committee meeting, but I just want to give a heads up, when you said Dr. White, no surprises. Okay.
It wasn't complicated, it was still an expedite.
Okay, so we'll start with the finance committee chaired by Dr. Patricia Payne and Dr. Palacio, and Dr. White are committee members.
I'd like to first of all thank Dr. White for taking my place as chairperson when I was not there, so thank you so much, Dr. White. And I'd like to call up Mary Rankin, who is our treasurer, and Lolita Campbell, who is our CFO. And both work extremely hard.
Good evening.
Good evening, Board President, Aunt Tribble, and trustee members. We promise you not to keep you long, so you can have time for your facilities. Tonight, Mary will present the treasury report, and I will review the resolutions.
We'll begin with the revenue for the month of July. Property taxes are favorable, even, even though, well, for the month, there were no collections because we didn't expect any. We'll expect more come the fall collection for property taxes. But we do, at this time, have 56% of that line item's budget received, which our forecast shows that it, as being that we'll close the year at 2.6 million up on just that line item, so that's good. Intergovernmental is comprised of E-rate, and that line item of the month, that portion was 76,000. And then in that category is also our local income tax that's distributed every month. And then our charges for services of that line item, public printing was 32,000 of that. And on miscellaneous revenue, it's, we continue to experience the good interest rates, and the interest earned for just the month was 175,000 of that 442,000 there. And we also received grant monies of 225,000 for the, that supports the branch at the Children's Museum Info Zone branch. And we have graphs to present that, the one on the left is showing the monthly by type compared to the budget of which line item is gray, and the 2024 is blue, and last year's on, in July is the orange line. And then to the right is year-to-date, so it shows we're in line across the board on all the types of revenue. As far as the expenditures for the month, personal services and benefits is the largest type, and it's coming in at, for the month, under, I'm on the wrong page. It's coming in at, under budget. And we're approximately 600,000 under budget per month on that line item. Supplies are small, and they're under budget. Services and charges increased for, we had some large payouts for the approved Biblical Commons renewal of software and other contractual services, and we had security costs increased as well, which we've been consistently experiencing this year. Our capital outlays consistent with last year. Overall, if you took the number of months, it would be 58% of the year is passed by the end of July, and we have got 50% spent, so we're favorable, we're favorable for expenditures. And then we have the graph, the month on the left, showing the budget in gray again, which shows that it's, our expenses are under for each category. And then it, the year-to-date is over to the right in the line graph, the yellow being the budget, blue being 2024, so it's showing we're under budget on the different categories of expenses. Then we have also a five-year comparison to show, which has the revenue and expenditures for that month of July, as well as for, by major expenditures types, where it breaks out the benefits from the salaries. Are there any questions?
The spike in 2024?
You may have said that, but on the expenditures.
Well, our budget is higher this year, I mean, it grows every year. It would have grown by at least 4%.
Right. So we do this separately from the resolution, is there a motion to accept the report of the treasurer for July 2024 for filing for audit?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll now have a roll call to.
I do have one more question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Matata.
Earlier, we heard comments about the disparities and the differences in terms of equity and salaries. And some folks would look and say, oh, well, I'm working in this particular career, I'm making plenty of money. And then we say 4% increase across the board, and yet folks who are already making a higher salary will get 4%. That means they bumped up quite a bit, and somebody making a lower, more modest income gets 4%. And it really doesn't even compete with some of the folks who are doing some of the other work. How, how does that get resoluted in this work if we keep on doing that with somebody who makes maybe $100,000 getting 4%, and then someone who's maybe making $40,000 or $50,000 getting 4%? How do we reconcile that? Because when, when Michael brought that up, it just struck me that some folks might look at that and say, okay, why would I even want to work in the library and make that kind of salary?
I truly understand your concern, and actually, I asked about this when I first started. From what I understood is that prior years, there was graduate raises, and then there were dissatisfaction about that, and therefore they decided to do the merit raises where it's across the board. So we're looking into different ways of providing the raises, you know, in 2025, but first we need to address the other issue, you know, the good wage initiative and the compression right now, but we are looking at other ways. So we did realize we can't make everyone happy, but that's why they went from one way of giving raises to another. So I do understand your concerns, Dr. Matata.
And I'm not so much thinking about making everybody happy, but I'm thinking about equity.
Yeah, equity, I understand.
And as, for folks who are making that modest salary, we so appreciate the amount of work that really goes into maintaining the quality. I mean, we've heard so much about the quality of the work and customer patron satisfaction and the kinds of things that the staff are going above and beyond to make a big difference. And while it might not seem like a big deal for folks who are already making over $100,000, for someone who's making a much more modest salary, it does make a difference. And so we'll go off for another year, continuing to do it, another year, and then another year. And so how do we begin to take this seriously now?
My, my, my comment would be, it's, it's a misnomer to say it's merit as opposed, it's not merit. Merit depends on performance, and there's a way to do for that. What we're talking about and what she's talking about is what Greg and Mike have been talking about, how do we rectify this in such a way that we have equity? So all the people, those at the bottom who need the bigger job or what have you, we can satisfy them, plus the people at the top. And it's a matter of, of a process that we have to set up to get that done. The good thing is that we are aware of it, and Mike was not going to let us forget it. And they've been kind of working on this, but this is one of those areas that you're looking at your budget, your revenue, and you make a decision to make this type of equatorial equity situation. It, it may be that type of decision you have to do, because if you progressively try to do it, it's not going to happen that way. You have to have a benchmark that you say, this is where we will, what's the terminology we use, what, what's that terminology for getting people in a better position pay-wise? What's, what's the term? Equal pay or merit, what was that supposed to be?
Good Wage Initiative?
Yes, what was it?
Equalism?
No, no, the Good Wage Initiative, right? That's it. Well, the Good Wage Initiative would have to be a, a maneuver that, of course, the board would have to approve. that would make that type of equity jump for employees. And then you go from there to get whatever you want to put in place. But if you talk about merit, that's a whole different ballgame. That may be something we may want to go to. The problem is there are so many skeletons in politics that come up in merit pay until it's better to almost have a joint committee of administrators and employees to kind of get that down because when you look at the merit, it's a whole different ballgame. But I agree with with what Greg has said and what Mike has said and definitely what Dr. Mertata has said. But we, somebody, got to make that commitment that this is what we get, that wage that we can all say we're responding to the needs of our employees. And you're still going to have demarcations between beginners or different classifications. But you got to make that happen. And you may want to plan for that to happen in twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five, but somewhere that has to happen. And from looking at the budget and how we're so good at meeting, being really, I want to commend all you guys for what a good job we're doing and staying within budget and what have you. But we're going to have to do that. That may be something we create a commission or something to do where we're going to have to come to this point. And this is the point that we achieve this terminology, Fair Wage Initiative, whatever you want to call it. But don't call it merit because that's not right. It's not fair. Just like calling it equality, it's not going to be equality. So maybe legally or something, but we need to look at that.
Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Payne.
I was going to ask, Dr. White, is that a motion?
No, but that would get conscious running, but I'm I'm up for that.
You have a motion related to the treasurer's report saw on the table, so.
Okay, well, we can.
Oh, okay. Well, we can do it after that.
Yeah, we I'm in agreement with the topic on the on the floor right now. So after that, we can put another form of motion.
Is there any more discussion on the motion, which is approval of the treasurer report for filing for audit? So we 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 moved a second. We were just we were doing discussion. If there's no further discussion, we'll have a roll call, please.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Mertata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approve.
Dr. White.
Approve.
Ms. Trivel.
Approved.
Thank you.
The motion carries. We'll move on to Resolution forty-eight, twenty-twenty-four for appropriations and tax rates. Ms. Campbell.
This is for approval for well, we had a special meeting on August the thirteenth where we presented the budget for twenty-twenty-five. And this resolution is to have approval for the tax appropriation and tax rates. The library is required by the Indiana Code thirty-six dash three dash six dash nine B to submit an adopted budget and a tax levies to the council clerk by August the thirtieth. On August the second and the ninth, the library plebiscuous notice in the plebiscuit hearing on August the thirteenth on adoption of the twenty-twenty-four, on adoption of the twenty-twenty-five budget on August the twenty-sixth of Indianapolis store and court commercial records. There is a correction that needs to be done in this resolution. It should say twenty-twenty-five. That the tax resolution includes the budget for the library operating fund, birth, rainy day fund, library, I mean, the LRF affected January first, two thousand twenty-five through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five. The twenty-twenty-five budget includes four percent increase in the growth rate of the levy set by DLGF, resulting in a maximum tax levy allowed. On the second page of your hard copy of your resolution, you will see that our budget is for eighty-five point nine million. And during the meeting, plebiscuit hearing on August the thirteenth, I did a high-level review of what this eighty-nine point five, I mean, eighty-five point nine million will reflect. So in operating in character one for personnel services, there would be an increase of point four point eight percent. And this will include a salary increase between two point five percent to four percent. And along with the initiative of the good wage and also six hundred thousand dollars of salary adjustment budget for that line to be implemented. And we also including the Sunday premium hours that has already been implemented and increasing the health insurance. We are guessing that it right now, we're still in a negotiation, but the health insurance may increase by seven point one-six percent. Then, of course, we got FICA and PERF for the character one. Character two will increase by four point eight-five percent, and that is for supplies. And that is for the purchase of PCs and laptops, refreshes and project before the twenty-twenty, which was the same as the twenty-twenty-four.
Pardon me, one second. I just want to let the board members know if you're looking at the hard copy, the information is on the the third page.
Yes.
Okay.
On the third page. So and on character three, we have an increase of nine point six-eight percent. And then for the capital outlays is a half percent. So this receiver do pass in a plebiscuit hearing. So I'm asking, I don't know if I'm supposed to say that. Asking for approval of the the adoption of the tax rates.
Thank you. Resolution, does that complete your presentation? Resolution forty-eight, twenty-twenty-four regarding appropriations and tax rates did receive a positive recommendation from the finance committee. So the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have the roll call, please.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Mertata.
No, I don't approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approve.
Dr. White.
Approve.
Ms. Trivel.
Approved. The motion carries five to one. Move on to Resolution forty-nine, twenty-twenty-four.
This makes our resolution for approval of the contract with Baker Tilly. This is a consultant firm that we use to help prepare our ACFOR and implement our GASB implication implementation for our independent audit. The total amount for this contract is sixty-nine thousand and forty-nine thousands for the ACFOR and five thousands for the gas B and fifteen thousand for client support. And this receiver do pass in the finance committee.
Thank you. And just for those not familiar with the acronyms, ACFOR, GASB.
Annual Comprehensive Financial Report and Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statements.
Thank you. Was there was there another?
Yeah, that was it.
All right, thank you. So the Resolution forty-nine, twenty-four regarding the Baker Tilly U.S. LLP engagement received a positive recommendation from the finance committee. So the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Mertata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approve.
Dr. White.
Approve.
Ms. Trivel.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously.
And here are some updates. On August the twelfth, the City County Council met and adopted the City County Council ordinance in regards to approving the bond. And today, earlier today, we had a Moody's rating call in which they review our financials and asked us several questions for our and we do this every year when we get our bonds. And then the bond sale is going to be approximately on Saturday, ninth through the tenth. So, yeah.
What is our current Moody's rating?
Double A.
Double A?
Mm-hmm. It's the second highest. So I'm requesting the highest. So we'll see. We'll know on Friday.
Great. Let's send the loop on that. Yes, Dr. Mertata.
Is this the appropriate time to put a motion on the floor?
Oh, I'm sorry, for with what Dr. White was saying? Pardon me, I'm, oh.
When is the best time to do that?
About what Dr. White was saying about, okay, yes, we're going to do that. I apologize. Council advises we should do it under new business.
Under new business.
Yes. So I we are mindful of of that.
Absolutely.
Out there. Okay. All right. Orda, thank you for the update.
Thank you. Thank you.
And thank you for all your work. It's a lot going on. We will now move to the Diversity Policy and Human Resources Committee, which is chaired by Mr. Raven Beederman and members Dr. Luis Palacio and Dr. Patricia Payne. Mr. Beederman, do you have a report?
Just a short report. At our committee meeting, we received more information about the updates to the behavior policy. We made some additional suggested edits. Those are going back through the process. And we should have a resolution at the next meeting for us to vote on.
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to Facilities Committee. Everybody take a big breath. The Facilities Committee is chaired by Dr. White and members are Dr. Mertata and Dr. Lisa Riolo. And Dr. White?
While I'm taking that breath, I want Adams to be walking because he's going to give me resuscitation here. And we're going to move through this.
Excuse me, my board packet, I mean, the Facilities Committee portion. All right, can everybody hear me? Okay. We are up and running. Okay. All right, so we have eleven resolutions and in there we have a public hearing somewhere. So we will move right along. First item, Resolution fifty-two thousand twenty-four. This is approval to award a services contract for retrocommissioning services for Eagle Branch, Martindale-Brightwood Branch and Central Library. So this services contract is for retrocommissioning services for Eagle and Martindale and monitoring-based commissioning for Central Library. Standard retrocommissioning in facilities occurs about every ten to fifteen years. You take a head-to-toe look of what is going on, specifically the energy. And as a part of that study, capital assets need to be replaced. Projects get identified to help save energy and reduce our annual utility budget. Eagle Branch was identified as the highest natural gas emitter of GHG gases. And Martindale-Brightwood was identified as the highest electric-sourced GHG emitter during our summer interns, I'm sorry, our summer fellows greenhouse gas inventory. So we are starting with those two. They are relatively newer branches. We do have some ideas, but we're going in with an open mind to see if we can reduce overall energy costs. Monitoring-based commissioning is a year-long project where a sensor is attached to our HVAC control system. Data points are read on a monthly basis and we get feedback on a monthly basis about smaller opportunities to address energy in real time. This is a new process for the library. It's been around for several years, but we have not taken advantage of it. And the HEPI Engineering has identified several possible instances that they're going to take a look at with the monitoring-based commissioning. So per Indiana Code five-two-two dash ten dash five, we will use that code to purchase the retrocommissioning savings to a governmental body. Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash ten dash eleven will be used to purchase the monitoring-based commissioning, and that is evaluation of supplies or system-containing supplies. And as I mentioned, HEPI Engineering is the engineering firm we have hired or we would like to hire. Total analysis cost is sixty-eight thousand. Would you like me to get that? Sixty-eight thousand one hundred twenty-seven dollars. The estimated capital and operational cost to address these suggestions as part of the analysis is approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We estimate that the energy savings as a result of these commissioning projects will result in a simple payback of two years or less. Services will be paid by our oldest bond fund, four-seventy-nine. Vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform one hundred percent of the work. The XBE utilization waiver was not necessary under the special purchasing methods. You'll see this eleven times, but an update for the first half of twenty-twenty-four, the operational services XBE utilization rate is forty point six. Our goal is twenty-seven percent in sum, but that is a sum of four individual goals. And the first half of twenty-twenty-four, IndyPL as an entire organization had their XBE utilization rate at thirty-six percent. Any questions?
So the this monitoring is taking data from the HVAC and then telling you the life of it? Or is it just more of energy management?
It's telling us minute by minute, hour by hour consumption of our HVAC. We see it day to day. And so they can really zero in on, okay, what was what was happening on this floor during this hour? What event happened? What what equipment failed? Or what equipment can be optimized during that particular timeframe? Hot day, cold day, busy day?
Energy management or you use it for life of the equipment or both?
Both. Extended life of the equipment and getting better equipment and identifying the right equipment to replace will result in not only extended life of the equipment, but also decreased energy cost. So all of the above.
Very good.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Resolution fifty, we're actually on fifty, twenty-twenty-four. Regarding the approval to award a services contract for retrocommissioning services for the Eagle Branch, Martindale-Brightwood Branch and Central Library received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee. So the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Mertata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approve.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Trivel.
Approved. The motion carries. Back to you.
Next resolution is Resolution fifty-one dash twenty-two thousand four. Approval to award award a purchase agreement for the East Thirty-Eighth Street Branch Furniture Update Project. For some background, furniture at East Thirty-Eighth was heavily used and needing updated, updating and replacing. We had updated some one-off pieces, but it was brought to our attention that the overall furniture as a as a unit needed to be updated. This is the first year of an annual plan to update three or four branches annually across the system. It is part of a two-pronged approach. Every twenty-five years, interior renovation for a branch. Every ten years, furniture update. Furniture does get used more than a pillar of brick. So the first three branches are East Thirty-Eighth, Hoville and West Indy. This resolution is for East Thirty-Eighth. Using a special purchasing method, savings to a governmental body under Indiana Code five dash twenty-two dash ten dash five, we utilized RJE Business Interiors. They have established a low-cost purchase contract with Omnia Partners. This is similar or equivalent to the state quantity purchasing agreements or QPAs that are also allowed under the specialty purchase, special purchasing methods and can be found online at thestateofindiana.gov. Total furniture cost is one hundred seventy-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and eighty-five cents. This does include three modular study rooms. East Thirty-Eighth does not have a single study room in the branch. They are in dire need of study rooms. I did not bring a picture, but these are modular study rooms. They can be moved very easily. They plug into a one hundred and twenty-volt outlet and it provides lighting, air. One of them, one of the three is handicapped accessible. The table can flip up. The chairs can flip up to accommodate any and all source of accessibility accessories. And this will be a welcome addition to East Thirty-Eighth. It is estimated that East Thirty-Eighth will get an interior renovation in the next five years. Once those five years are up and we install permanent study rooms, then we can move these modular study rooms to another branch. Project will be funded by the furniture ref-. Project will be funded by the furniture refresh line item from Bond Fund four eighty-two. The vendor, RJE, is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform or supply one hundred percent of the cost of the contract. And the utilization waiver was not necessary under the special purchasing method. Any questions? I'm sorry, I think that's your question, actually.
It is, um, but I'd like to ask, uh, our trustees if you are, um, for consent to consider, uh, fifty-one and fifty-two together. They are both similar, they're both furniture, same source, um, different branches, and we can save ourselves a vote if you are okay with that. So, you wanna, pardon me? Yes, any consent?
Just give consent.
Have consent, great. Um, so you can go ahead and talk about fifty-two, and then we'll vote on both together.
Fifty-two is the same purchase agreement for Hallville Branch. Same background, same purchasing method. Cost is one hundred two thousand, two hundred thirty-two. Uh, Hallville did not need study rooms, and so that was the largest difference. They're about similar size. Founded from a bond fund. RJE is not a city-certified XBE, and utilization waiver was not required.
So, both resolution fifty-one twenty twenty-four and resolution fifty-two twenty twenty-four received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee. And the Chair would request, uh, a second to such recommendations for both of those resolutions.
Right.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Palacio?
Um, Adams, thanks for the introduction of this. So, is it the, are, I didn't understand the, what you explained about the vendor?
Mm-hmm.
And is it the, this the default vendor? Or this is the preferred, or is there any other vendors?
This is a vendor that we've used in the past. Uh, and we, uh, they are regarded as a quality vendor with NDPL. Uh, this is our first year doing a furniture refresh, and, uh, they were at or near the top of our list of vendors to utilize. Fortunately enough, um, they have the Omnia Partners contract, which allows for direct purchasing through that contract. Uh, and that streamlined the process a little bit more, uh, to make sure that these projects do get accomplished.
But did they go through a bid, or?
So, the way that the Omnia and others, um, there are other, uh, contract, um, companies, purchasing contract companies. The way that this works is that it originates at a oftentimes governmental body. So, for example, um, Vancouver, Oregon, Vancouver, Oregon? Portland, Oregon, let's go with that one. Portland, Oregon Airport may need furniture. And they, uh, put out an RFP, and they work with Omnia Contract, uh, Omnia Partners. And then Omnia solicits, um, you know, hundreds of companies to bid on this, provide for the lowest, um, possible price. The, um, sponsoring organization is the Portland, Oregon Airport. But through, um, this partnership, any organization who is a member of the Omnia Partners network can purchase using those same prices. So, Indiana, the state of Indiana does the same thing through their quantity purchasing agreements. They send out a QPA request and ask companies to provide their lowest possible cost for ABC items. That agreement is, uh, ratified and made a quantity purchasing agreement for the state of Indiana. And now, other state and local municipalities, government organizations, can use that same agreement at those same low prices without having to go through, excuse me, the procurement process, uh, process, potentially ending up in higher costs.
Thanks. And then, um, does this include the removal of the old furniture?
Yes, it does. Yep, removal, disposal if necessary. Uh, we will go through all the old furniture and see if there is any that is salvageable, um, to be sold at auction. Most of it will not be. So, removal, disposal, installation, uh, soup to nuts.
Thanks.
Dr. Mertada?
I'm, I'm very mindful that we want to keep clicking on through. The fact that we keep using a not-a-city-certified XBE, and then we say the number is quarter one, quarter two, oh, it's forty point six XBE rate. We keep doing that, and it causes me to really have some concern about not going through procurement processes and continuously using that as a gauge for using the same business over and over again. We've raised this concern in the past. And I'm, I'm aware that we have a process. We have a wonderful person who goes through and makes sure that we do try to find the right vendors that can give us a diverse, um, bid and bidding process. But at some point or another, I keep seeing this coming up again and again and again with some of the same companies, that impact on the DEI, and that we're constantly saying it's not a city-certified XBE. I'd just like to call that attention to the, my fellow board members. And at some point or another, I'd like for us, not now, because we have so many more to go through. I'd like for us to come back and revisit this. We've talked about it, it keeps coming up. And I'm seeing millions and millions of dollars constantly going to some of the individuals, companies. And that, there does not seem to be a way to say, uh, let's dig deeper into this. Not now. We, we've got all these other resolutions. But I'd like for us to come back and, and have a serious conversation about it.
And may I ask, just for clarification? Dr. Mertada, are you asking about the instances in which we, we choose a vendor that is, um, does not have, or we approve a contract that does not have XBE, um, participation, or the use of the procurement, um, process, um, that selects, I think, preferred vendors who may not have that?
I like the way you just differentiated that. That's right on point. The use of the preferred vendor? And the second part, the first part of what you said. We keep saying this part about the XBE and the person, the vendor is not an XBE. So, it's really both issues. And, um, I, I'm very aware that it is, there are ways and processes to work around what we've been trying to do as a board to address issues of diversity, equity and inclusion. And I'd like for us to spend some time digging into this a little bit more. And we have a great officer that does work with, uh, facilities to do that. But something keeps happening, and it's very problematic.
May I suggest, when we have that conversation, that we ask for, um, there's, uh, that we ask for the availability of XBEs in the industries and the service areas that we are talking about?
We're seeking.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so I think that's another part of it. When disparity studies are done, you not only look at the, uh, the industry, but you look at the availability of XBEs. And so I think that's gonna be an important part of that conversation. Dr. Palacio?
I just want to add, um, to those comments that, for me, that's important. But I think there's another angle to this, which is, we're, yes, we're seeing the same vendors. So, that, in my mind, it starts, the word that, um, that starts coming up is monopoly, right? Because then we're not allowing the small businesses to have a shot. Because if, if they have this contract with the state and others, it's like a one-time, from what I'm reading, uh, from your description, it's a one-time bid, and then you grab everything on the table, right? So, then, all the, all the other small businesses, regardless of who's leading that business, their composition, they don't have a shot at this. And I can see how, even if you, for you, from your point of view, if you go through the other process, you're gonna end up with the same vendor. Because it's the vendor who's been able to get to the point where they can lower the cost so much that all the others are out of business, right? So, it's, it's not an easy thing to solve. So, I agree with Dr. Mertada that we, we should continue this discussion at a later time. But there is, I, for me, there is more to it than the DEI component. It's also, are we allowing businesses in Indiana to thrive? Small businesses, that they're trying to grow up and, and that kind of stuff. Are, are we providing those opportunities?
I think that, um, first of all, we have a set goal that we have to meet in the DEI specification. You gotta make sure you work from that goal. And we've done a good job of this. I think what, what you're saying would be cause for a great discussion. And I don't see, uh, compromising that too much with, uh, really looking into it. The fact of the matter is, uh, monopoly is probably not the word. But some entities are so large that they can provide reduced prices for this. And we have to be conscious of our budget and what we want to spend for a project. So, it's not a simple solution. So, you're talking about different variables, expense, uh, you're talking about, uh, DEI, uh, goal, et cetera, et cetera. And so, we, we would definitely look forward to that. I hope we can, um, start that in, in the Facilities Committee and kind of work from that.
I was just saying that, Dr. White, that I'd like to have you, um, lead that discussion with the Facilities Committee. And then if it comes to a change in policy, then we can refer it to DPHR.
Sure.
Um, since most of our bigger contracts are, start there anyway.
Yeah.
So, if you could put that on your list. We're getting a lot of assignments tonight. We're gonna be busy.
We'll have two.
So far. We got twelve more resolutions to get there.
Tonight is young, huh?
Right, right. And you hold on to, uh, Dr. Payne. Okay. All right, so we are on, um, that was discussion for resolutions fifty. Fifty-one and fifty-two. Um, so the, the motion was, uh, seconded. If there's no further discussion, we will have a roll call to approve, um, resolutions, uh, fifty-one and fifty-two.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertada?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
And Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved. The motion carries.
Next is resolution thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four, amended and updated. This is authorization to grant temporary and fee simple right-of-way to Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, Indigo, for two-seven-two-six and two-eight-one-zero, East Washington Street, also known as the East Washington Street Branch, Indianapolis, Indiana. We had a public hearing about this, um, a couple of months back. Indigo is expanding the blue line of their bus rapid transit system. And it runs from the airport, uh, almost exclusively along Washington Street. So, that first paragraph is from the first hearing and resolution that was passed, the original thirty-seven dash twenty twenty-four. Indigo has determined it is necessary to acquire seven hundred eighty-four square feet of land from NDPL in fee simple right-of-way at the East Washington Branch and an additional one thousand three hundred sixty square feet of land on a temporary right-of-way for the completion of the project. That had a public hearing that was voted, uh, voted on and passed. The amendment and the update is the second bullet point. Indigo has increased the total area for fee simple right-of-way from seven hundred eighty-four square feet to eight hundred sixty square feet. So, that is an additional, I'm not gonna do math. Impacts, benefits to patrons and staff with easier access to NDPL facilities and services. No ongoing fiscal impacts. Indigo has increased our compensation from eight thousand five hundred dollars to nine thousand four hundred dollars. Promotes equity in the community, and it is saving public funds. I should have a question slide after all of these.
Okay, um, so we've heard, uh, the presentation on resolution thirty-seven twenty twenty-four regarding temporary and fee simple right-of-way to Indianapolis Public Transportation Corporation, also known as Indigo, for twenty-seven twenty-six and twenty-eight-ten, East Washington Street, at the East Washington Street Branch, Indianapolis, Indiana. This, uh, this resolution received a positive recommendation from the Facilities Committee. So, the Chair would request a second to such communi- recommendation?
A second.
Is there any discussion?
Let me ask something. Did I see that it's taking away land from the branch? Or room, or some, and then I said?
Mr. Brown, if, if the lawyer in the room could explain the legal implications of the two different types?
So, we have, we have two different takings here. You have a, uh, a taking of permanent right-of-way, which will be improved with street infrastructure, sidewalks, those types of things. And then you have a construction easement, which is a temporary grant for them to come onto the library property for a period of time to make those improvements. So, it is all adjacent to the, to the right-of-way?
Yeah.
To, um, so it's not taking physical space from the branch itself. It's taking some of the property owned by the library.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertada?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
Ms. Trivell?
Approved. The motion carries. I will now, um, recess the regular meeting and convene a public hearing for the next, uh, matter on the agenda to consider the offer to grant temporary and fee simple right-of-way to Indigo for, oh, to, okay. This one, okay, to the City of Indianapolis for one ninety-eight South Girls School Road, uh, at the Wayne Branch in Indianapolis, Indiana. And then, so now I will ask Mr., we don't have to vote on. Okay, so I'll ask Mr. Parsons to discuss the proposed offer.
Okay. Uh, the City of Indianapolis is approving Girls School Road, uh, for three and a half miles between, uh, just south of Washington Street to right around Girls School Road and Twenty-first Street. The, and I saw, I'm sorry, I reused a slide. This is not, um, this is not Wayne Branch. This is the East Washington, uh, Branch. My, my apologies. Uh, I can describe it. Uh, the city has determined it necessary to acquire zero point one-two-three acres of land from NDPL in fee simple right-of-way at the Wayne Branch. So, what this is, is a strip of land, uh, directly adjacent to Girls School Road on the east side of our property, the west side of the street. They are expanding, uh, Girls School Road. And if I read the plans correctly, uh, plan, I'm putting a bridge over the railroad tracks, a much wider bridge over those railroad tracks that are just to the south of Wayne's, uh, Wayne Branch. So, benefits to patrons, easier access to NDPL, uh, services, specifically those who walk. Uh, there will be a much, uh, more accessible sidewalk. Total compensation from the city is approximately twenty-six, is not approximately, is exactly twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Uh, and that will, uh, cure our cost to move the sign, the stand, the under Wayne Branch sign, back approximately ten feet. Uh, the sign needs to be a certain distance away from the right-of-way. That is now part of the City of Indianapolis, and we will need a, an electrician to move that for us. And that twenty-six-five, uh, will be able to cover the cost. Uh, overall, the infrastructure improvements will deliver, uh, better services where such improvements are needed, and it will create a safer in-driving experience, which does promote equity in the community.
Okay. So, um, at this point, thank you, Mr. Parsons. We will invite public comment from the audience on this proposal. This is proposal fifty-three twenty twenty-four. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this proposal? Okay. Hearing none, then I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
That's okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, we'll have a roll call to approve closing the public hearing.
Mr. Beederman?
Approved.
Dr. Mertada?
Approved.
Dr. Palacio?
Approved.
Dr. Payne?
Approved.
Dr. White?
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell?
Approved. The motion carries. The motion carries. This public hearing is adjourned, and we will now reconvene from recess to our regular meeting. And we will now look at a vote on Resolution 53-2024, which was described during our public hearing. Resolution 53-2024 regarding authorization to grant temporary and fee simple right-of-way to the city of Indianapolis for 198 Girls' School Road at the Wayne Branch Library, received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have a question, and Mr. Brown, this is a question for you. I heard you say temporary and fee simple. I don't believe the resolution has temporary.
I apologize. I'm reading from...
It's just fee simple.
Okay.
So thank you for confirming this authorization to grant fee simple right-of-way. You gotta, we gotta start over? Okay, to the city of Indianapolis. All right, so where were we? We were at the roll call, right?
Did you get a second?
We, it was second for the recommendation, yes. So we're now ready for the roll call.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries. Moving forward.
The next item is Resolution 54-2024, approval to award a purchase agreement, a purchase, yeah, purchase agreement, for the Nora Branch parking lot repavement project. Nora Branch is currently under construction for an entire interior renovation. Immediate repairs to the parking lot are required as part of that mobilization. We were planning on repaving the parking lot later this fall, but this required paving right now offers an opportunity for a single mobilization to pave the parking lot all at once with just a single mobilization of a vendor. So using the special purchasing method, 5-22-10-5, savings to a governmental body. Using a single vendor with a single mobilization will present those savings to Globe Asphalt Paving Company. Total cost is $70,230. That is less than the budgeted amount of $100,000, so there's a 30% savings. Project will be funded by the various facilities projects line item from Bond 482. Vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform 100% of the work. Utilization waiver was not required under the special purchasing method.
That concludes your presentation. So Resolution 54-2024, approval to award a purchase agreement for the Nora Branch parking lot repaving project, received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So we're saying that we could not find any of the minority businesses to do the paving of the lot. Is that correct?
Our best estimate is that no other company will be able to provide those services in for that amount, given that if it were not awarded to Globe, that would be two companies who would have to mobilize equipment and labor power at two different locations at two different times. And it would cost more than the $70,230.
How do you know that it will cost more than 70? How do you know that?
I can't know for certain. It's based on my experience that there is a very high probability that it will cost more.
But there's been no estimation that that would be the occurrence. Otherwise, we still keep going with that same idea that I raised before. And I'm not talking about just for the utilization of a DEI vendor. I'm talking about being able to use other smaller companies that, yes, it may, it may be, but we don't have the data to show us. And data helps us make the best decisions. And if we don't have the data, we're moving along by a feeling rather than the data necessary to tell us that it would cost more if we used smaller vendors, gave smaller businesses an opportunity to pave the drive, the parking lot at Nora. Once again, we're gonna do the same thing over and over again and then say, okay, how do we do this in a more equitable way for smaller businesses to get a shot at the funding? I think this is something that we need to raise some questions about, and we need to not just keep doing this. And I'm, this is not the time to go through a lot of the discussions about it, but it is a time for discussing whether or not small businesses get an opportunity to compete for these larger dollars again and again. And if we don't do something about it, we'll just keep on rubber-stamping it.
I'm so agreed after the chat.
So agree.
So I'll add a little just context on the use of special purchasing, because that's what you've seen and some of the concerns you've raised tonight. Special purchasing, under Indiana statute, there are limitations of when you can do that. It has to meet one of those very specific, I think there's eight or 10 kind of special purchasing concepts. The reason that this is available here is you already have a contractor onsite performing some of the work under a publicly bid, publicly awarded. I think that was, I don't remember if that was CMC or how that was, how that was previously awarded. But under the previous project award, this vendor was chosen as the vendor for a more limited scope. And so you have the ability, because they're already mobilized, they're already onsite, to go to them directly and ask for a quote from them under that limited circumstance. So it is not just because they're a previous vendor to the library or we like the color of their pens or whatever. It is, it is because they're already onsite and that is available to you. That's why that special purchasing is available in this instance specifically. So I just wanted to make sure that we were very clear about why there are not public bids on some of these, as you're used to seeing, as you'll see in some of the subsequent ones. In these very limited circumstances, the obligation of staff is to say, hey, this makes the most sense from a efficiency cost perspective and facts as we know them today about why we're choosing that. They have to maintain those records in case a vendor ever came back and said, why weren't we given the opportunity to bid for this? Under what circumstances did you choose that special purchasing? So that's part of the obligation of staff or the organization when they're making those choices. So I just wanted to make sure we clarified. It's included in the resolutions, but it hasn't been stated tonight about why you're using some of these very limited special purpose, special purchasing options.
And I wrote that down, special purchasing concept. So I appreciate you elaborating on that. Thank you.
It doesn't, it doesn't do anything about any of the other concerns you've raised, but I just wanted to make sure we expressed why we were utilizing those here and why you're not seeing...
For this particular case.
For this particular case.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments? Okay, so we've received a second. Hearing none, we'll call the roll on Resolution 54-2024 regarding approval to award a purchase agreement for the Nora Branch parking lot repavement project.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Nay.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
No.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved.
Thank you.
So the motion passes four to two. Resolution 55-2024.
Resolution 55-2024 is approval to award a purchase order, purchase agreement for the youth and adult service areas furniture reconfiguration project. So youth and adult services area has undergone a reorganization. Per the strategic plan, they have created a digital inclusion department division. I forget what the exact designation is. Reconfiguration of the furniture is necessary to optimize staff needs and workflow. Using the special purchasing methods of Indiana Code 5-22-10-12, government discount available, and Indiana Code 5-22-10-13, single source of supply. The furniture, the vendor that we have chosen, Office Works, is the representative in our area of Knoll furniture that will match the existing furniture in the youth and adult services area. The total cost is $73,524.74, which is less than the budgeted amount of $100,000. Project will be funded via Bond Fund 485. The vendor is a city-certified minority business enterprise and will supply 100% of the work. And the XBE utilization waiver was not required under the special purchasing method.
Okay, that concludes your presentation.
Yes.
Resolution 55-2024, approval to award a purchase agreement for the program development area furniture refiguration project at Central Library, received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Dr. Palacio.
I just want to say thank you for trying to save the library money. So I know we're talking about opportunity for bidding and all that kind of stuff, but I know also you're trying to save money as well, so thanks.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 56.
This is approval to award a construction services contract for the Central Library Computer Lab and Digital Inclusion Offices reconfiguration project. So, and this is also in response to the strategic plan. The digital inclusion services has been established within adult services. The computer lab reconfiguration will better meet the needs of both staff and patrons. So this was a standard invitation to bid, public notice in mid-July. Notice was sent to 24 vendors, 22 vendors, and two business development organizations, 15 of whom were classified as XBEs. The invitation to bid was posted on the NDPL website, and the bid documents were available at Repro Graphics. Pre-bid conference and site tour on July 17th with two vendors. We used the invitation to bid process per Public Works statute, Indiana Code 36-1-12. We received one bid. Per Indiana code, we shall award to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, which was Stens Construction Company. The awarded cost of $373,746, combined with the furniture cost, which is in the next resolution, is below the, the combination is below the architect's estimate of $500,000 for this particular job. The project is funded via Bond Fund 485. The vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform 30% of the work. One MBE subcontractor, Oba Washington, will perform 3% of the work. Not, the remaining 93% of the work will be provided by non-XBEs. And the XBE utilization waiver was approved. That's the end.
That concludes your presentation.
Yes.
Resolution 56-2024, approval to award a construction services contract for the Central Library Computer Lab and Digital Inclusion Offices reconfiguration project, received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Nay.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. So the motion carries five to one. Mr. Adams, I'm gonna ask, as we go forward, when you put these numbers up, if you can have these numbers lined up so that they're easily legible. My, my number, Raymond, is coming out. But if you could line up the percentages and the dollar amount in a way that is easily adjustable going forward, not tonight, but, because this, this is hard for me to read and get the relative, the relative proportion where we are.
Sure.
Thank you.
Got it.
So we'll move on to Resolution 57.
All right. Resolution 57-2024. Oh, that was the schedule. The computer lab is currently closed. Substantial completion estimated by March 1 of next year. All right, 57-2024 is approval to award a purchase agreement for the Central Library Computer Lab and Digital Inclusion Offices furniture reconfiguration project. So this is the furniture portion of the digital inclusion offices project. Again, same background, the reconfiguration will better meet the needs of staff and patrons. Per the two, per two special purchasing methods, 5-22-10-12 governmental discount available, and 5-22-10-13, single source of supply. To match the existing Knoll furniture that is in the digital inclusion lab, we would like to award this contract to Office Works. The total cost is $65,524.21, which combined with the construction costs from the previous resolution is less than the architect's estimate of $500,000. The project is funded via Bond Fund 485. The vendor is a certified, a city-certified minority business enterprise and will supply 100% of the work. The XBE utilization waiver was not required as this, was under a special purchasing method. That's the end.
Okay. Resolution 57-2024 regarding the approval to award a construction services contract for the Central Library Computer Lab and Digital Inclusion Offices reconfiguration project, received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
I think that that's the title carried over from the previous resolution.
From the previous.
Yeah. So it should be the approval to award.
Okay, so I need a new script. Okay, so we're on Resolution 57-2024, approval to award a purchase order for the Central Library Computer Lab and Digital Inclusion Office Furniture reconfiguration project. Pardon me. So are you all consent to move forward with the corrected title? Is there any discussion?
Just, if I don't, if I don't have someone else. So it said 500,000 and it's like 62,000. What, why was it so far under?
Oh, the 500,000 was the combined project cost for both the furniture and the construction. So the construction was 300, and I believe 43,000, plus the 65,000 gives us in the very low fours.
Okay.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll call the roll, please.
Mr. Peterman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Trivell.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. We're now on Resolution 58, approval to amend the services contract for design services for the learning curve at Central Library renovation project.
So KRM Plus Architecture was awarded the initial contract in May of 2022, and those are the two referring resolutions. The initial design fee was $500,000. Through the initial analysis and scope review, the scope expanded from merely floor two and 30% of floor three at Central Library in the tower to the entirety of floor two and the entirety of floor three. It has been increased from, we are requesting an increase from $591,000 to $665,000. That is an increase of $74,000. This will be funded via the 2023A Bond Fund 487, which is dedicated entirely to the learning curve reconfiguration. KRM Plus Architecture met or exceeded the MW and DOBE goals using their subcontractors. The VBE utilization goal was not met. That concludes my presentation, simple amendment.
Okay, so the Resolution 58-2024, approval to amend the services contract for design services for the library curve at Central Library renovation program, project, was, received a positive recommendation... program, project was, received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee. The chair would entertain a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I remember this going through and the importance of this expansion, and I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion, or are there any questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
The motion passes, passes and carries unanimously. Move on to resolution fifty-nine.
This is approval to establish the guaranteed maximum price with Stens Corporation serving as the construction manager as constructor for the Learning Curve at Central Library renovation project. So, as background, we are using a construction manager as constructor, otherwise known as construction manager at risk, abbreviated CMC. The CMC manages and is ultimately responsible for all the construction work. This is as opposed to a general contractor or GC where the owner, NDPL, is ultimately responsible for the work. The CMC is also included in the design work, which is much earlier in the process during the design bid-build process for construction. Public notice went out on March eleventh and March eighteenth for these subcontractor contracts. Notice was sent to literally hundreds of vendors and business development organizations using the combined lists of NDPL and Stens Construction. And this is ranging from mechanical, electrical, plumbing, construction, millwork, furniture, carpeting, you name it. We had hundreds ourselves, Stens added their other hundreds. Notices were posted on the NDPL website. All the bid documents were available at Repro Graphics, and we had a pre-bid conference and site tour on April second. Stens has submitted a guaranteed maximum price that includes the following. I will not read all that. It's up there and in the resolution. The proposed guaranteed maximum price is four million, nine hundred twenty-eight thousand and forty-three dollars. The GMP of four million, nine hundred twenty-three thousand dollars and four, nine hundred twenty-eight thousand and forty-three dollars is within the architect's proposed budget, and this will be funded via Bond Fund four eighty-seven, which is the same bond fund. Funding's KRM Plus Architecture, as I mentioned, is wholly dedicated to the curve remodel project. The vendor is not a city-certified XBE and will self-perform ten percent of the work. That is Stens Construction is the vendor. Their subcontractors have the following XBE percentages with a total non-XBE percentage of eighty-four point six-three. The XBE utilization waiver was approved. And that can, no, I do have a schedule for this one. Project start date, September ninth, so in approximately two weeks upon approval of this. Substantial completion is December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five, so that will be four hundred seventy-eight, or approximately a year and four months of construction. And that concludes my presentation.
Resolution fifty-nine, twenty-twenty-four, regarding the approval to establish the guaranteed maximum price for the construction manager as constructor for the Learning Curve at Central Library renovation project. Received a positive recommendation from the facilities committee, so the chair would request a second to such recommendation.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I would just point out what the board is actually approving tonight. The board is actually approving, the board has already selected previously Stens as the CMC. So, that is not what's at issue tonight. Tonight, you are approving the final kind of guaranteed maximum price of that agreement. So, I just wanted to make sure that there was clarification about what's before you this evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Dr. Palacio.
Thank you. And thanks for the clarification on that, but I still have a question on the operations of the project. Will there be any, do you think, any dust in the air?
Yes. So, this will be a phased project. We currently have it in three individual phases, and so floors two and three will not be wholly shut down. They will still be in operation. We will have quasi-permanent and the construction world temporary containment and abatement for the construction work. There will be some noise, there will be some dust. It is a construction site inside of a building. However, there will be both noise and dust abatement. There will be additional HVAC filtration, dust filters running. Additionally, most of the work will be performed after hours where both staff and patrons are not in the building. There will be some during hours that will be necessary guaranteed for a project of this size.
Are we guaranteeing the safety of the people in the building with all of those abamements? Because my understanding is that the, the regulations are not enough. And some, some construction sites have visited, they say, well, we're within regulation. I can see the dust. If I can see it, I can breathe it. It's not good.
I can get, I can take a look at, and I can send you the, the abatement documentation that Stens has provided, and we can talk about that anytime. Let me write that down.
I think we, we can come up with some numbers ourselves that are better than regulation.
Sure.
Keep everybody's lungs healthy as possible.
Do we need to take any kind of action on following up on that?
Put it in your agenda building section.
Okay. So, it's good. Are there, are there any other questions or comments?
This, but I do have a question.
Okay, well, we'll take this one?
Yes.
Okay. So, hearing none, we'll call the roll on resolution fifty-nine, twenty-twenty-four.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved. The motion carries unanimously. And this is where the crowd goes wild, okay? This is the end of your presentations, Mr. Parsons?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you so much for that.
I got a question.
Okay, but please remain for Dr. Payne.
Very quickly. How are we assisting the Fort Ben branch with this sound problem that they, that they were talking about? Are we?
The board approved a resolution last month to have a noise analysis done, and that is either scheduled or complete, and we're awaiting results. The result of that study, we've already had an initial noise study. This is a noise abatement study providing options to abate the noise, and then the third phase will be construction or what, you know, actually executing those suggestions.
And will be applied to other situations, so we don't have this problem.
Yes. So, to that point, Fort Ben is a one-off, actually, when it comes to noise of this magnitude. Most of that can be attributed to the building standards required by the Fort Ben Reuse Authority. This building was required to present as a two-story building, even though it was only ever designed as a one-story building, which increased the height of the ceiling to basically mimic a basketball court. And those are not quiet places. So, unfortunately, the design change was not caught during the design phase or the construction phase, but we are dealing with it now. But our standard architects who design our new and renovated branches do not make ceilings this high. So, almost guaranteed, we will have hanging acoustical tiles out in the main library. Almost guaranteed, we will have wall coverings of some sort, potential ceiling coverings in the hallway out here, and we're looking at other potential physical noise abatement solutions as part of this study. How, how much basketball can we play in here? You'll have to put a motion on the floor to determine that.
Another agenda item. All right. Any other questions for Mr. Parsons? Thank you, Mr. Parsons. Thank you, Dr. White. Second, did it, oh, it was, it was efficient. I think we did a good job. Thank you. Okay. We don't, we won't. Okay. We are now going to hear the library foundation update from Mr. Beederman.
All right, there's, we have a lengthy update this month. So, the foundation wants to thank the Fort Ben branch for hosting the quarterly board of, foundation board of directors meeting on August thirteenth. We got a tour of the facility, got to meet some people. It was great. We got an update on the summer reading program during the meeting as well. So, congrats to the staff on a successful summer reading program. We thank eighty-six donors from last month. That include Clark Quinn, Eli Lilly, a small law firm known as Manningly Burke Coen and Beederman, and Rich Charles. So, you know, make sure to thank all of them. And this month, we provided more than five hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars to the library, including young arts program, Marion County Internet Library, meet an author, be an author, and YA author visits. That is the report.
Thank you, Mr. Beederman. We'll move on to the report of the CEO. Mr. Gregory Hill, please give your report.
All right, thank you. First is the confirmatory resolution, sixty, twenty-twenty-four, related to financial travel and personnel matters that occurs between each board meeting. The resolution is in its typical format, and I would ask for your approval of the resolution.
Is there a question to approve resolution sixty, twenty-twenty-four, regarding finances, personnel, and travel?
Submissed.
Is there a second?
Second.
The resolution has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approved.
Dr. Matata.
Approved.
Dr. Palacio.
Approved.
Dr. Payne.
Approved.
Dr. White.
Approved.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
The motion carries. Mr. Hill.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so my report for August twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four will include activities that occurred in July, will be a truncated version of what you have in your, your board package, which is the full report. It will cover selected branch programs, some programming from PDA, CBLC statistical data, I'm sorry, statistical data and surveys, Star War winners for July, bus pass distribution data, update on our quarter three goals, and then upcoming programs for September. Central Library and branch programming. Central Library had their nonprofit program series. There were two in the series. One of them was the intro to Foundation Directory, Finding Grant Funders. And this is where patrons learn how to use the Foundation Directory to research tools that can help their five-oh-one nonprofit grant makers most likely to fund their projects. Fort Ben, they offered a craft and activity table that was dedicated to the Olympics, the activity track medals that were won by each country. The West Indianapolis branch hosted special edition of Craft Noon. One of the branch patrons, who was an artist, supplied art supplies and taught patrons and staff how to create ink art. And the Wayne branch, they book club met to discuss Richard V. Reed's book of Boys and Men, Why the Modern Male is Struggling, Why It Matters, and What to Do About It, and they had nine patrons who participated in that event. Program highlights for CBLC, Hoosiers Reading Frederick Douglass Together. The community members read and discussed What to the Slave is the Fourth of July by Frederick Douglass. Hoosiers Reading Frederick Douglass Together is a collaborative project, which brought members of the community together to listen to Douglass's words and ideals about life and participated in readings throughout Indiana for building educational curriculum. Another program was the Dash of Gwendolyn Carey Russell Green program. On July thirteenth, CBLC staff engaged the community in reading Gwendolyn Russell Green and promoting literacy and culture. The CBLC was happy to host the family of Gwendolyn Russell Green as well, a native author and past resident of Indianapolis. They celebrated a dash of Gwen as they read excerpts of her poetic works. The Seventh Annual Book Fest Juneteenth Celebration, we had approximately two hundred and twenty-five patrons who attended this event, including attendees, vendors, and volunteers. There were several programs and workshops. One of them was the One State, One Story, which had eighteen patrons who attended that. Indiana Humanities, Indiana Humanities was the, was part of the initiative for that. One State, One Story program invites Hoosiers to engage deeply with the book as part of a statewide conversation tied to our current theme. And the title of the book was by Tia Miles, All That She Carried, The Journey of Ashley Sack, A Black Family's Keepsake, and Ashley Bryan's Freedom Over Me. We had ten authors who presented fast forwards at the Juneteenth Celebration. Fast forwards are five to seven-minute live presentations that allowed authors to tell the community about their literary work. A few statistical data from the Juneteenth Celebration. Eighty-three percent of patrons strongly agreed that the program was educational. Eighty-three percent of adults strongly agreed that they enjoyed the program. A hundred percent agreed the program will help them develop or continue their love of reading. And then a hundred percent of program expectations were met by the folks who took the survey. Some comments from the survey. Listening to the guest speaker inspired me to begin reading again. Great opportunity to learn about authors in Indianapolis. And then the layout was easy to access. The display was attractive, and the authors were friendly. I love the variety of books available in one place. And I did attend the Juneteenth Celebration. I actually gave remarks. It was really a nice program. Had a lot of attendees, and people really enjoyed the atmosphere. Some numbers from the program development area, starting from your left, going from left to right. We had four hundred and sixty children's programs, and those programs were library programs throughout the system, not just program development area programs. We had approximately twenty thousand, seven hundred and nine participants. For the adult side, we had a hundred and eighty-eight adult programs with four thousand, three hundred and seventy-two patrons. And then North Star Digital Literacy, we had seventy-nine unique users. Of those seventy-nine unique users, they had eighty-eight hours of independent learning. And then they also completed a hundred and sixty-four assessments. In addition, it launched a new assessment test for Windows eleven, because we were currently using a Windows ten, and assessments are both in English and Spanish. Our July Star Award winners, our summer reading excellence was Katie Warriors, Katie Watson Wares from Outreach. Patron services was Marissa Cohen from Martin Del Brightwood. Peer support is Teresa Coleman from Martin Del Brightwood. Community involvement was Deb Errett from the College Branch. Volunteers and partnerships is Mary Hoxton. Committee's choice is Janet Spalding, a selector from CMSA. Page excellence is Sarah George, a page at the Lawrence Branch. And other duties assigned was Sarah Tatsin, a public services librarian here at the Fort Ben branch. And just an update on the bus pass distribution by quarters. In quarter one, as you see, is our lowest distribution. I believe that's just due because we haven't actually received all of our past, that we're going to have for distribution by that time. Quarter two, quarter three, quarter four, quarter three in two thousand twenty-two, we had four hundred and eighty-nine bus passes that was distributed. And then in quarter four in two thousand twenty-two, you see we had a hundred and forty. Distribution by category, men were nine hundred and sixty-nine recipients, women were five hundred recipients, and then seniors was thirty-six. The primary reason for bus pass was employment was thirty-seven percent, home insecure, twenty-six percent, low income was fifteen percent. And we didn't have all the numbers for two thousand twenty-four. Our goals for quarter three, since we've been Our goals for quarter three, since we've been in quarter three, is what we started on. Policy review, I sent the Chair of the DPHR Committee a list of all the library policies by department, and the last date they were updated. Also, there is a periodic review calendar that cycles over two years that will have us go through all the policies over the next two years. Ms. Tisha Galarse, Ms. Mary Barr are the project managers for that. The Business Cut Annuity Plan is just a plan that shows how we will operate in case of a disaster. And so far, we have done a identification of essential functions has been completed. Business impact analysis have been completed. Threat identification and risk analysis has been completed. And then a review of emergency operational plans has been completed. And we hope to have this done by the end of the year. The last one is the SharePoint. The SharePoint Project is moving along very well. On August the nineteenth, we had five department or areas that went live on SharePoint. They all look really good, and we're looking at the remaining departments will go live no later than December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-four.
Mr. Hill. Can I ask a question now? The SharePoint, what, what is, what is looking good? What are, what is the use of that project? I know it's an internal, but just to explain a little bit about what is doing.
It was the Internet that we were using before, but since we went to Microsoft three sixty-five, we used SharePoint. So, we're just converting all of our departmental sites from the old Internet over to SharePoint using Microsoft three sixty-five.
So, are these shared documents, or is it the website for each of the departments?
It's a website for each of the departments, and they all responsible for what they want on those particular websites. CMSA, PDA has done, if you wanna, if you don't mind, Cheryl, if you wanna just give a brief description of what you did.
Can you use the mic? I don't mean to prolong the conversation. Understand what, it's a big deal.
It is. So, it really is streamlining communication very much. So, it's like a resource, an internal resource page, and it has, it's a lot easier to navigate than the intranet, the way it is now. You just, it's like a long list that you click through. And so, if you're look, if you are looking for, you know, a particular cheat sheet for, you have a program tomorrow, and you need, you need to know how to set up the room, it would just take forever. But now, it's, it's much more user-friendly. It's got click-through, it's got images. So, and the hope is that it will improve communication throughout the system. So, we've gotten really good feedback, and it's only been up for a couple of weeks, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. All right, any other questions about the SharePoint? All right.
No, I don't have any.
The next slide is, I just want to bring this to the attention of, of board members and staff in the room as well. Some of the upcoming programs that we have for September. The opening reception, the Fourth Annual Women of Color Art Exhibit is gonna be Tuesday, September the tenth, from five to seven forty-five PM. So, if you are available, we appreciate you coming out for that. September the fourteenth is the Family Fandom Film Fest and Costume Contest, Indiana Jones, Saturday, September the fourteenth, and that's from ten fifteen to four forty-five. And I forgot to put where that was, I apologize. And then the last one here was the, I, I believe that's at Central, or September the fourteenth. The Allison Transmission In-Person History Lecture and Q and A Session, Sunday, September the fifteenth, from two to three fifteen, and that's also at the Central Library. So, I would invite each and every one of you out to participate in one of these programs, if you could, and staff in the room as well.
Thank you for that, Mr. Hill. We talked about that, ways to kind of prick our consciousness about some of the events that are going on. So, every month, you're gonna show us some of those, that'd be great. I won't be able to do any this month, but, I'll be out of town, but.
We'll have some bigger programs too, because they'll be coming our way.
That's great.
Any other questions?
That concludes your report.
That's it, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Are there any other questions for the CEO? Hearing none, we're going to keep moving on here to new business. Okay, so, earlier, Dr. White made, well, if you or Dr. Matata wanted to raise the issue that you raised earlier.
Yes, I, I wanted to move, move that we create a task force to recommend formal action to achieve our fair wage initiative goal.
Okay. The, the motion has been made to create a task force to recommend a form of action for a true, formal action, I'm sorry, for achieving our good wage initiative. And that would include looking at, it's gonna include looking at our wage scale, right, and the, and the compression that would occur from that, and sort of how to do some kind of.
The budget, the whole, it's a comprehensive assessment of what we can do to achieve this particular goal.
Right. And what, and how we prioritize all of those things that are required in that process.
And also, after you achieve the initial goal of making sure we have the fair or good wage, then from there, how do we go about increase in wages? And don't use merit, because you don't wanna do that. That's, takes a lot of work for that. But there are other ways to put together a scale to be fair with employees as you work forward from there.
Okay. Dr., okay, she, she wants to add, because I think they're doing this in concert.
The language that you use is very important, and we want to make sure that we make the recommendation and the task force that different individuals are a part of it, including, of course, our fiscal team of being able to look at that, but also considering what other kinds of individuals, what other individuals need to be a part of this. And I would recommend that legal counsel be a part of that as well.
That's good. And you gotta have representation, that's a part of it.
So, can we?
And a board member.
Yeah, two things, I guess, obviously, we're gonna need to take copious notes on this motion. And then, can we have the, this task force recommendation come back, either through the committee or to the board with all the specifics? Because we're, we are identifying a lot of the aspects.
Do you want it to come back through the HR committee? That's why it should come back.
Okay, well, we'll send it through Mr. Beederman. So, you got another.
I look forward to it.
You got another assignment.
Oh, you look so excited. I, I, it's on the inside.
So, so it will, we will talk about the stakeholders, right? Who is gonna be on the process, the priorities, and all of the steps that are involved, and we'll have that.
I'd like to see a board member on that also. Call, Dr. White. Should be a part of that.
It's really at the intersection of HR and finance. It's right there at that intersection, because then we can look at what are the kinds of things that need to happen with our, with our budgeting. But at the same time, what are the policies and procedures that need to be impacted through HR and equity?
And then we also need to talk about timeline. I know we mentioned that, but, you know, when are we looking at the, the implementation of those? Dr. Palacio?
Thanks. So, I appreciate the concern. This is, has been very important to me since I raised it a year ago or so. But it seems to me that we just approved Resolution forty-eight, twenty twenty-four to address this. And I, I'm gonna call Alita, if she's willing to come and clarify, but it seems to me that the Good Wages Initiative is covered under that resolution. And the compression is also covered with the two and a half percent or four percent. I do appreciate Dr. White's distinction between the merit and the, what's the Good Wage Initiative, which is two separate bullet points. I see the Good Wages Initiative more as a minimum wage kind of thing, not so much a race. So, I don't wanna, in my mind, I'm not saying this is a race. This is just like when the government says this is a minimum wage, which is gonna, so anybody under eighteen, and I understand it's not everybody under eighteen, so I just will make that clear. But everybody who qualifies, who's under eighteen, will get that, sort of a minimum starting point, so we don't have to bump people. And I know there is a concern about compression, but I don't see it as, as a same thing, so it's along the same lines, because it's not merit, it's not compression. It's, there's people who actually cannot put, you know, pay the bills, put their food on the table, that kind of stuff, right? So, I think we're going in steps, but the good news is that Alita told me that with this resolution, we're tackling both. So, could you clarify?
Well, the Good Wage Initiative is actually Indiana program for anyone who are, who works, who makes eighteen dollars under, who are benefit eligible, so they have benefits. And then, that means that we need to raise them up to eighteen dollars. We do realize that the cost of living is much higher, and that we have to look at maybe raising that higher soon. However, the Good Wage Initiative, again, is just an Indiana program that says anyone who makes under eighteen full-time and are benefit eligible, or eligible for this program. So, this is separate than the process of addressing the compression or raising people up to a higher pay and giving raises at a different level, percentage level.
So, beginning employee in the library makes what? And I'm talking about the lowest classification, what's their beginning salary?
You mean?
Or wage?
Full-time?
Full-time, yeah.
Oh, full-time? Well, when I received the data from HR, I know that the lowest wage for a part-time was like fifteen sixty-nine. For a full-time, it was close to eighteen, it was like seventeen something. But again, I don't have that data in front of me, but this information does come from HR, so.
I, I, I think the task force has to do that kind of research and look at what the floor would be for the different part-time, full-time classifications. And like I said, it's, it's a comprehensive review, because you gotta look at the intercession of the physical finance and, and all the dynamics. But you got, you gotta have representation from representative, employee representative, you gotta have a board member there, you have to have your HR people, what have you. But at the end of the day, I don't want us to be talking about this when I leave the board. And that could be another year. But I'm just saying, we need to get it done, because it's gonna get more expensive the longer we wait. So, how do you get that set up to be fair with your employees?
We're currently meeting Greg, I, Tisha, and John. We need to try to come up with a plan. When we get close, we was gonna bring in the union. There's just been some vacations, people have been sick, like myself, and that just didn't happen, you know, lately. But we plan to have this implemented soon, or have a plan implemented where we have, where we can bring our people to the eighteen dollars and with the progressive increases. Because we do realize that we may not be able to increase everyone within the two thousand twenty-five budget, but we wanna have a plan, so we can communicate that out to the staff.
It may take one, two, three years to get there, but you gotta have a plan, right?
Yes.
So, may I say something here? It seems to me that we, we need to sort of define what it is that we're doing the task force about, and it, it's, it's easy, I mean, we all kind of get a sense of it by saying good wages. But there's two things that I want to ask about. That eighteen dollars was a figure that was out in like twenty sixteen, seventeen? And so, I think we determined that it is not eighteen dollars anymore. Is that correct?
Well, the, the initiative, the program, it still says eighteen dollars if you, if you Google the program for that, it still says eighteen dollars on there. But we do realize that the cost of living is much higher. So, I don't know if they're gonna change that initiative to a higher amount.
So, that's what.
The Good Wage Initiative through the city.
So, my, my point is this, then, if our point is to look at equity and what our floor should be based on what people need to be, and, and now the good wage is, is lagging instead of leading this process, I think that also ought to be incorporated in the corp, in the plan, as well as the conversation around this. And so, let us not peg this process to an outdated floor, right? Which may add time and more complexity to it. The other, the other thing that I see we need to be thoughtful about here is that there's a train moving for two thousand twenty-five. And in terms of what the salary rates and that are gonna be, and that's now. And so, I think we also just need to be mindful that there may need to be some, the initial process, that I guess this task force would be brought in on, and then looking at the longer term. I just think that's important to say, because I know that you've been doing some work on it already.
Yeah.
So, okay. Dr. Palacio?
My question, how many people will be impacted by this resolution for the Good Wages Initiative? Six, six hundred thousand dollars?
I believe it was between a hundred and eighty and two hundred, and two hundred people.
Okay.
Yeah. But I don't have that figure in front of me, but it's around that area.
Thanks.
And I know it is late, so I think bringing back something that's kind of comprehensive and a plan for this, will we be able to do that in September, or you think October? I'm just, just like, what does it look like? What's your expectation?
I think you can't do justice to it for September. You have to leave that.
I don't, I don't either.
You know, October and November, because you wanna really do it right. And a good wage is almost another misnomer, because we have to step forward, not back or wait on someone. When you do this, it has to be progressive.
Yes.
That means it may take two, three years to get there. But I'm saying start it so that employees would know what you're working towards.
Right.
Your salary resolution would come in December typically, so you would need to have some guidance for the two thousand twenty-five, but two thousand twenty-five implementation by December. So, think of an outside date, that would be an appropriate outside date for at least an initial implementation.
Or the initial structure of this task force is what I was talking about. So, October, does October seem likely, or November? I just wanna put a date on it, they say, be a smart goal.
We have to make the task force and do the work, and make the recommendation all by December. So, we probably need it like last month.
So, you're gonna come back in September with the structure of the task force?
It sounds, it sounds like that is a commandment, where we will get it done.
Try.
Okay.
We, yeah, we don't have.
Yay.
Yeah.
The reason why I brought this up in the first place, contrary to what some folks might feel, is that there's an equity issue. And the reason why I brought it up is because we'll go on and on and on with the discussion. So, thank you, Chair Tribble, and everyone else that has been discussing it, because some people will continue to get high wages and increases in salary, and others will not. And to bring this to an expedited opportunity for discussion as a task force that will help to really move this conversation forward. And so, I'd like to ask if that's the agenda, that they will begin to meet this requirement by December, to pull together some data, et cetera.
Actually, we, what we ask for is the structure of the task force by our meeting in September. And so, we need to make sure that our attorneys are involved in this process. I know you're an attorney. Okay, and I think, and we're gonna.
There was a motion.
There was a motion. We've had discussion.
Second.
I think we already did that.
I don't think there was a second.
We didn't, we didn't.
No, no.
Okay, so, second. It's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Mr. Beederman.
Approve.
Dr. Matata.
Approve.
Dr. Palacio.
Approve.
Dr. Payne.
Approve.
Dr. White.
Approve.
And Ms. Tribble.
Approved.
I had one other issue to bring forward. We talked about making sure that we had a discussion about the XBE and the XBE rates, and I'd like to ask if we could postpone that discussion. and I'd like to ask if we could postpone that discussion at this time, but bring it up at our next board meeting as an agenda item.
For, oh, so you moved on to our agenda items?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, we'll add that to the agenda for September. Are there any other suggestions for September agenda items? We've moved on. Dr. Palacio?
I think for that agenda item, it would be informative to have some sort of, I'm looking at Mr. Parsons, some sort of crush, I don't say crush course, but like a little brief about all the different methods that we have for getting vendors and some of the vocabulary, that kind of stuff, something that we can, when we're looking at, at your presentations and having that discussion, we can have a little bit more of a framework.
We need Ms. Simmons to give a presentation, right?
Thank you. I was going to say, I'm following purchasing methods.
Exactly.
But she's the manager of purchasing.
Yes.
And her and I are creating a purchasing manual, and that should be maybe finalized by then.
Okay. Well, we're going to be looking for a report and a, and a primer, and a, a brief at our September meeting. I hope that doesn't make us have another 9:30 meeting.
I would limit the total number of resolutions to seven.
We know we're going to have a limit on, by committee. Okay. All right, there, the next regular meeting of the Board of Trustees will be Monday, September 23rd, at the East Washington Street Branch, 2822 East Washington Street, at 6:30 PM. Thank everybody tonight for your patience, for your efficiency, and for the additional 45 minutes of your life. We do appreciate it, and if there's no fur, seeing no further business to come before the board, this meeting is adjourned.